Stacy?
She's sitting here.
Good evening. The April 25th, 2017 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the evening, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table, and if you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete the lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call rule.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District One.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District Three.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District Four.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District Two.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent?
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney?
Here.
Ms. Erin Benavides, District Science Fair Liaison, please introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. All of these students are representing less than one percent of eligible students in the state of Florida. They attended State Science Fair. For the pledge, I have Hunter Hutchinson from Osceola Middle.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you gonna speak with us? Or is he? Oh, yeah. If you're not gonna speak, then yeah, come up in line up.
For the inspiration, I have Sai Sriram from Vanguard High School.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sai Sriram from Vanguard High School. What is humanity's most important tool? Is it the hammer with which we construct our homes? Is it the vehicles that get us from place to place? Though obviously essential in our material world, in my experience, the tool we need most is scientific curiosity. The dissemination of scientific knowledge must first begin with a seemingly simple start: curiosity of the natural world. It is with this simple rule that I've lived my life, and I encourage everyone to as well. However, scientific inquiry is only a tool and requires a very human connection to be preeminent. It is with this recognition that I encourage you all to inquire, to empower yourselves with questioning and experimentation. Thank you.
Also representing us at the State Science Fair, we had Vivek Sandrapati from Howard Middle School, Tristan Pank from Osceola Middle School, Kunal Apadaya from Vanguard High School, and Matthew Stromeyer from Bellevue High School. And collectively, the Big Springs region with students from Marion and Sumter Counties took home twenty-five place awards, over three thousand dollars in cash and prizes, and sixteen thousand dollars in scholarships. And Kunal and Sai will be two of three students from Marion County representing us at the International Science Fair in LA. They leave on Mother's Day, and over seventy-six countries from around the world are represented at that fair.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna ask that you please turn around for a second. We wanna acknowledge you. Are there any board members that would like to acknowledge them? Ms. Stacy and them?
I'd like to say this is just amazing, and we're so proud of you. And I know behind you are some good parents, because good parents get us where you're at. And they instill good work ethics, and always be appreciative of them, because being grateful is the number-one virtue. If you're always grateful for what you have, you will always be happy.
You know, when I look at you guys, I just want you to know, there's nothing wrong with being competitive. And being in this industry that you all are in...
He's a coach.
It's always competitive, and I know, and when you go from one level to the next level, it's just amazing how much it will push you to move to the next level. I look forward to hearing about you guys in the next five to ten years, because I know you'll be doing some great things. I wanna congratulate the parents of these young people, because they didn't get here by themselves, and it's a job well done. And I wish you well when you move into that arena on the other side of the country over there, because it's competitive. And congratulations on you guys for stepping up to the challenge.
Thank you all, okay? Thank you.
Congratulations. Science, I was not good in science. It was very difficult for me, so congratulations to you, because our engineers, our doctors, what a wonderful field to go into. And I hope some of you will study and come back and be productive citizens of Marion County. Don't forget about us, because you are going to be very successful, and we would love for you to be very successful here. I want to again thank the parents, as everybody else has, because without you, these young people would not have been here. So congratulations, and we're anxious to hear more about you.
Dr. Mayer?
We couldn't be more proud. It's like we're your parents. So we wish you all the best as you move forward. And along with your parents, we'd also like to congratulate each of your teachers, who I know are as vested in you as your parents are. So thank you for your effort. I'm gonna thank the teachers as well as the parents.
And I'll just tell you guys, congratulations, job well done. I'm excited and interested to see where you guys go.
That's amazing.
Because we have future, just anything right here. And I just encourage you guys to keep on following your hearts and your dreams and inquire, like you said. And the gentlemen that are going to LA represent us well. I know you will. And come back and tell us how it goes.
We did.
Yeah, we wanna know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Did they get their pictures?
Kevin did.
Wait, Kevin did?
We did.
Okay, we're good. It's a proud moment.
Not official without the pictures.
Okay, and we're gonna move our meeting along with Dr. Mayer.
With the exception of JD-1778 under item 23.1, and JD-1788, JD-1797, JD-1799, JD-100, JD-17101, JD-17103, JD-17104, JD-17106, and JD-17107 under item 23.2, which have been withdrawn entirely. I recommend approval of the agenda for this school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, like sign. In the motion passed, five zero, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 9th, 2017 administrative briefing and work session?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, like sign. In the motion passed, five zero, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 23rd, 2017 administrative briefing and work session?
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, like sign. In the motion passed, five zero, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 28th, 2017 school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, like sign. In the motion passed, five zero, Dr. Craig Hamm, Deputy and Superintendent of Operations, would you like to introduce Lieutenant Carlton Curtis of the Marion County Sheriff's Office, who was asked to make a presentation to the board regarding placement of signage on district property?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I'd like to substitute and introduce a man who needs no introduction, Sheriff Billy Woods, who will address this issue, and we have a PowerPoint presentation to accompany.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I love having fun, so I'm usually loud and excited everything I do, guys. But thank you, Superintendent, Chairwoman, and board members for allowing us to be here today. And Lieutenant Curtis is here with me, just so you know, he's here with me.
You can call him aside if you want. If you want it, just call her, I'll bring it up.
We're here to present to you a program that we are wanting to get started, and I'm seeking y'all's permission to put this program, and it deals with signs regarding to our sex offenders. Sex offenders out here, there's a particular statute, and which we'll get to it in the slides here in a minute, show it to you, where they cannot be on school campuses or school property anywhere in the state of Florida. And the signage in which we are seeking to put out there, I've asked in partnership, personally, through my staff members, have got them on board to include the Bellevue Police Department, Dunellen Police Department, Ocala Police Department, and the State Attorney's Office. They're all on board with this program to be able to reach out there. Go to the next, who has the slide? Obviously, you're up here for one reason. You're up here for the children. And part of our responsibility at the Sheriff's Office of protecting not only, you know, our vast amount of citizens, but it's our children out here. They're our future, and I don't have to teach and tell you all that, because I'm pretty much preaching to the choir. And one of the biggest things is working with all of the branches in which you just saw in law enforcement, but also working with you. I've spoke with the superintendent, or excuse me, my staff has spoke with the superintendent as well, too, of getting on here. And here's what it sums up to be. What we're looking to do, and you can keep going through the slides as you go through, is to put this sign up on the property. Now, what we've allocated is, right now, at the moment, is three signs per school. This sign obviously would be on larger scale. It outlines the specific statute that tells sex offenders that register as sex offenders that cannot come on the school campuses, outlines the punishment and everything else. Now, this is just a small sign, just so we have a demonstration for each of you. As you can see on here, each of the organizations that have agreed to be part of it, along with y'all's logo on there as well, too, to be part of this program. The sign actually will be three foot by three foot, very large sign. In essence, what this sign is doing is eliminating the process of what we pretty much sum up to call eliminating the trespass warning. And when a sex offender comes on the campus, if ourselves, law enforcement, Ocala PD, Bellevue, whoever comes across them, they don't have to give a warning. Now, our part in this whole thing is what we're going to do, is each of them, because they have to register with the Sheriff's Office. And when they come to register, they're gonna be signing, they're gonna be signing the form. Now, the ones that's already registered with us, will obviously have to be going out there. We'll have to send our units out there to get them. They'll sign this form of recognizing what this statute is, and we will also be obtaining their thumbprint, so that if they ever go to court after we've made the arrest, eliminating the warning process that allows us to go ahead and make this arrest, if they ever take it to court, they cannot ever deny that they were on the campus whatsoever. That thumper actually was a suggestion from the State Attorney's Office. We liked it and put it on there, and so there's no way for them to deny it. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is the form that they pretty much will sign and recognize. Next slide. The cost is, but roughly, we're figuring on the high end, is forty-three dollars each. Hundred-and-eighty signs is what we've come up with, with a total cost of seventy-seven hundred dollars. I know how money is, trust me. I'm running a very big budget right now. But however, I'm willing to pay for half of that, and I'm seeking the superintendent's help as well, too, if you wanna...
I'm pleased to let you know that I spoke with Mrs. Zanetti today, and the foundation will split the cost with the Sheriff's Department for having the signs produced, and our personnel will actually install the signs at the obvious entrance points to the various campuses.
I don't know what's, I don't remember what's on the next slide.
I'm getting there.
I think I hit that, actually.
Yep.
Yeah, I jumped ahead there, so you don't mind. But I'm pretty much asking for your permission. I'm seeking your support and your permission to put it on these campuses. I think it's vital. I think it's important to protecting. And if you want, the sign locations, obviously, like the gym entrances of stadiums, the football stadiums, the ball fields, wherever the vehicle drop off and pick-up points for, at the schools as well, too. Three is it. Now, we probably have figured on the high end of the signs, the amount of signs, so we may have extras left over that we could spread out a little bit more if we have to. Any questions? That's a good sign.
Mr. James looks like he...
They always put me in front when we run into things like this.
Yes.
I met with you guys, and just like when I talked with you earlier, I'm very excited about the fact that we need to have these signs out there. There's no question in my mind, with the number of people that come on our campuses, when I say our campuses and our schools and things, this is an excellent idea. And I wanna commend you guys for bringing it to us and getting us involved with it, because every time I think in terms of the safety of the young people, I think in terms of how can we make the parents aware? Because if parents read those signs and they know about somebody that's on our campuses...
Yes.
Then they can alert us to the fact. And again, I just wanna thank you guys for what you've done, and especially the resource officer will have another tool now to work with.
You're welcome, Mr. James. Absolutely. I personally believe it's extremely important to build a partnership, especially with law enforcement, and the way law enforcement's viewed in society today around the nation. And reaching out to our school board is, to me, is vital, and I'm more than pleased to be here. Anybody else got any questions or comments? Yes?
I just wanna say thank you very much for moving forward this, and I wanna thank the Public Education Foundation for stepping up and saying that they would fund the other half, so that we can get started on this. So they will be up and rocking and rolling by the start of next school year, I would assume.
Absolutely, yes. Soon as we can get the signs made and get them put up, that should be more than enough time, to be honest with you.
Excellent. Thank you.
I got a whole pile of green and white people that would gladly sign.
I also wanna tell you, thank you making that message loud and clear, and the fingerprint idea, and coming together with our community, like you said, the State Attorney's Office, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I just love this, and I love that you've reached out to us, and I hope that we can continue this relationship.
Absolutely. A pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Wonderful. I guess I gotta run my meeting. Mr. Mark Vianello, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, is here with a presentation of the expansion of the Career and Technical Education Program.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, school board members. You'll recall on Thursday of last week, we had a board work session, and at that time, we went into a great deal. I think we spent about forty-five minutes covering a variety of topics that I'm gonna try to cover tonight, but I'm gonna do it in about five or six minutes. So my purpose tonight is just to give a quick overview and a summary of a more detailed conversation that we had last Thursday. It is my pleasure to be here tonight, and it is my pleasure to be able to continue this discussion. So as you're reading what will be our major initiatives that fall underneath the umbrella of CTE, which will impact our students and also impact our community, I wanna remind the board of some very important vocabulary. So when I talk about CTE, I gotta start off with my favorite word, and that word is relevance. So our program has to be relevant to our students and our community. Choice, and I'll expand on that and say informed choice. Our students have to understand all of the options that they have. Return on investment, that's a word that businesses use for years. Now, we in education are starting to use that word more often, and we're certainly gonna use that word in CTE as well. And then the last key vocabulary word is our tax referendum. And so because of our community's support, we were able to do some things and to help take our CTE programs to that very next level, so we always have to be mindful and thankful of our community. So here are our major initiatives. We're gonna start off with the lead model, and we went into detail of those thirteen indicators. And so what I wanna remind the board tonight is that this is foundational, this is fundamental. This will be applied, our lead model will be applied to all of our forty-plus career and technical programs at the middle school level and at the high school level, and it will help objectively answer the question with data of how are we doing in a particular CTE program? So we will apply those thirteen standards to each and every program. We are starting now. Now, it's gonna take some time. We'll probably run out of time here at the end of the school year. We'll pick back up right at the beginning of next school year, and what we'll create is a gap analysis of where a program is on those thirteen indicators, and where we want that program to be, to be lead compliant, which is, of course, all thirteen indicators. And that will be a staff development plan for that particular program. And then our collective district CTE staff development plan will be based upon the needs of all of our career and technical programs. So again, that is, that will be applied to all of our programs, to take all of our programs from good to great. So another key piece of this is what Dr. Mayer likes to refer to as MTI 2.0. So we're building on top of the lead model, building on top of increasing the quality of all of our programs. And we're gonna take a look at MTI, and we're gonna turn it from a school that operates just during the day to a school that operates around the clock, from a school that serves just high school students to a school that serves high school students and adults. So the first part of the day will be a more traditional sense. We'll have classes that run from 7:40 to 3 o'clock. Next year, we will have a transportation option, so those students, and the big key is for MTI, the change will be no longer do you have to leave your base school permanently to be an MTI student. Now you can take your academic classes at your base school, and if you like one of the elective options at MTI, more so than what you do at your base school, you'll be able to come to MTI for just those classes and then travel back to your base school. So we'll have a transportation option in the morning, and the afternoon, we'll have an option for car riders. In the middle of the day, will be for those students who are still an MTI student, juniors who came over under the old model, we'll serve them next year, and then we'll transition out. At 3 o'clock in the afternoon, that's when we'll have five programs from Marion Technical College coming over, and they will go into the evening until 9 o'clock. So that campus will be repurposed. We're gonna add light to it, and metaphorically, too, light, there'll be students there all throughout the day, and we're looking forward to that evolution. Career Choice Academies, you've heard a lot about, and we went into detail on that last Thursday as well. Think of a Career Choice Academy as a program of choice, a career technical program of choice that is aligned to our local and regional workforce need. And so we'll take that program, that need, and we'll stick it at a high school and allow any student that is interested in that particular program to attend that high school. So where did we start this year? For the past two years, we've heard logistics, logistics, logistics from our community. Our response as educators have been, okay, we hear you. We'll help build that talent pipeline. We'll open up a Career Choice Academy at Westport High School. We'll also open up one on the other side of the county at Lake Weir High School. So that will start in August. And then the following year, we'll hope to open up, we will open up, two or three more Career Choice Academies. The year after that, another two or three more Career Choice Academies after that. So what we'll end up with is quality programs at each and every high school. If a student, going back to choice, if that doesn't connect to make their education relevant, they'll have multiple Career Choice Academies that they can choose from, and they'll have the repurposed MTI that they can choose from as well. So a couple other key or events that are coming up that I wanna make everybody aware of, to Thursday night, we have, this ties into choice and relevance, we've invited every eighth, ninth, and tenth grade student in the district to come hear more about what a Career Choice Academy is, meet our business partners, meet the teachers, as well as the elective options at MTI. So we hope we have a good turnout. I'm not wearing my MTI hat anymore on this. I wear the hat of, let's inform parents and inform students. And we're not looking for numbers, we just wanna make sure that our community, our student community, understands the options that they have. So and part of our response to that is to open our doors and say, come learn about what we do, so you can make your best option. We've got a new event, and I'm real excited about this. We've, I don't wanna say we've thrown this together at the last minute, because it makes that appear that we're unorganized. We've got a great staff, and they've worked awfully hard on this. But we have, literally in the last three or four weeks, said, this is something that's good, this is something we wanna do, and this is something that we're gonna continue to do. So any student who has earned a nationally recognized certification, and that for a CTE student and for the business community, that's currency. That certification is value to the business member, validates what the student can do, and for the student, it's money in their pocket, coming out more than just a high school diploma. They can get paid more hourly wage and help get that job when they have certifications. So we wanna reward what we're looking for in the world of CTE, coming out with that nationally recognized certification. It doesn't get any better of that than that. And then I failed to mention this at the work session on Thursday, don't know why, so I wanted to mention it now. We have a senior job fair, and we're real excited about that as well. We're partnering with Career Source. It'll be at Brewster Hall on Wednesday, May 17th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We'll have over twenty employers in attendance, and every student, their ticket in the door was to sit, soft skills. Ms. King, you love the word, you love the concept, and it's a good concept. So every student who's gonna go through the senior job fair will have gone through a two-hour soft skill presentation from Career Source, and that will be their ticket in. Our partners with Career Source have come up with thirty-five hundred dollars worth of scholarships for those students who attend. They'll raffle that off for an MT, to go to MTC or to CF. So we had over three-hundred-and-fifty students go through those soft skills presentations, and we have twenty employers. There'll be rooms, there will be in Brewster Hall, there'll be rooms in the back where they can interview and offer students jobs right there on the spot. This will be the second year that we do that, and again, you know, talking about the culture of CTE, like the certification night, this senior job fair will be something that we continue to do as well. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't think I've ever covered that much information on CTE in the amount of time that I did, but I did it. So can I answer any questions?
I have one. Last year's senior job fair, do we have any results on how many of our kids actually went to work?
The last year, I'll call it a flop, because I think it was a flop. We had very few students attend, so that was last year. We've looked at, but we can, we did it after school. The decision was made to do it after seniors graduate, last year graduated, so, and we didn't put the time upfront like we did this year. So we made some changes this year to make it... So we made some changes this year to make it better, but that's an excellent question, Ms. McCall, and we should be able to track that information. So I should be able to answer that question after, after this job fair.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
I would just like to say the same thing that I mentioned at the workshop. For the public and for the parents and for the newspaper, we have a great person in charge. I've watched your career grow, and I have so much confidence in you. And if anybody knows me, I don't give compliments unless they are deserved and earned. I am not fluffy, politically correct, kumbaya singer. But thank you. This district is in good shape with you at the helm of this.
One of the things that I talked about was the special needs students. Would you talk and let us know what we're doing, let people know what we're doing with those kids?
Yes. Every student who, when they get accepted into MTI, for example, they will get a letter that, and we've worked with our ESE department. So a student will be pending, accepted pending upon an IEP committee at their best, at their base school. So we've worked with our ESE department. Very important that we've done that. And we will let them know, as students get accepted at MTI, that we need a IEP meeting scheduled ASAP, so that committee can make the determination, what type of supports will that student need to be successful on that campus? Same thing will happen with Career Choice Academies.
Just wanted to make sure that people out there know that we are looking out for all of, all of our students as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vianello, I want to applaud you also. You have done a wonderful job, and this is a very exciting time for Marion County students and our community as a whole. Again, I would also like to thank Dr. Mayer for having the vision and releasing the potential in you to make this go forward. It's, it's a great team and just really exciting to watch. So, thank you. Okay, we're going to move along to Ms. Suzanne McGuire, Director of Family, School, and Community Engagement. She would like to recognize the School Notes magazine, young artist art contest winners.
Good evening, Superintendent, Madam Chair, Board members. This is very exciting. I know Mark just talked about rebranding and moving forward with some things, and I'm going to ask Gail Perry, who is the publisher of School Notes, to join me for this recognition. But the magazine is going through very exciting, positive changes and tying in a lot to what we're doing in the changes in Marion County school system. So what we're going to do tonight is recognize some of our young aspiring artists and then talk a little bit about the potential moving forward with changes in the magazine. And if you want to share what each student is going to receive.
Yes. So we had around three hundred art entries last year over the summer, and we chose four winners, and we also rewarded the teachers. So we had three runners up, and they win twenty-five dollars in some art supplies, and we have one grand prize winner, and she wins a hundred dollars in some art supplies.
And the prizes this time were donated and sponsored by Florida Credit Union, so we do want to thank them for our partnership with our art projects for our students. So one of the runners up is Asher Inman. Asher, I'm sorry. There's at least one name I'm not going to.
So every, every issue, we have a theme. It's kind of like a writing pump, but it's an art pump. So this, this issue's theme was, what would you do if there was a dragon under your bed? What would you go home? And so here's your twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. And just stay up here for me. Awesome job.
These are all published on our website, created by a computer science team at U.S.
Awesome job. I know, I'm like. Our next runner up is Vishnavi. Is she here? I think she's. There's a lot of, a lot of. And also, our next runner up is Haley. If Haley could come up, please. And she brought her artwork to share with you.
Okay, sorry.
And our grand prize winner is Leilani. What's exciting is the art contest will be in every month's magazine, and moving forward, some of the things that Gail and I have collaborated on, Ms. Stacy, with our family involvement pieces, is some of the themes to the artwork in the cross-curriculum contest will all be tied into different activities that we're doing in the school system. There's actually, in the new publication, the center is a calendar, so school dates and school activities and some of our special projects will all be able to be published in there. The Superintendent will have her monthly book club recommendations to our students, and Kevin and I are working to produce cards that we can actually send out to all the schools, so the students who want to join the book club and read some of the recommendations from our Superintendent will have their own book club membership as well. So we're very excited about moving forward and the opportunity to share information that's written by teachers for our parents, for our families, on core subject matter and activities for our students, as well as an informational resource that'll be published every month and sent to our students. So. And you all are fabulous.
Haley, it was mentioned you brought your artwork with you. Is there any way you can display it? Because we would like to see. It's hard, if you want to.
Can I see it?
Okay. Here we go.
Oh, there's the dragon.
Yes.
Oh, my goodness, under the bed.
That is awesome. I would love to hear your story one day. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, parents.
Ms. Marilyn Underwood, Director of School Development and Evaluation, would like to introduce Ms. Marjorie McGee, Director of Student Life at College of Central Florida, who is here to recognize Mr. Ken McAtier, Principal of Westport. Hi.
Hi. Thank you and good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayer, Mr. Lake. It is truly a pleasure to facilitate a presentation of an award to one of our outstanding principals in this county, long-term, Mr. Ken McAtier, Principal at Westport High School. And to do so, I'd like to introduce Marjorie McGee, who is the Director of Student Life at the College of Central Florida.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Vice Chair, and Board Members. I told Sierra earlier, we need to do something cute now, like the little ones. Can't really compete with that. I'd like to also introduce, this is Sierra Oliver. She is a current student at the College of Central Florida. She is our President of our Student Activities Board, which is our student government on our campus, and she is a former student of Mr. McAtier's and a proud graduate of Dunalan High School. Each year, the Florida College System Government Association, long title, which is comprised of our student governments from all twenty-eight of our state colleges, from the top of the state to the bottom, from east to west, bestows four distinguished, Bob Graham Awards. One for an advisor on campus, a student on campus, a college employee, and a campus supporter. The first three are kind of a given. They generally work at the college, attend the college, that kind of thing. However, the category of community supporter is very special. This is someone that is, does extraordinary things for campuses. And remember, this is one award across the entire state, across our twenty-eight colleges that have multiple campuses. The Community Supporter Award is for someone that does extraordinary work with their local college and is a true supporter of the college mission. Here in Ocala, there is none other than Principal Ken McAtier. Year after year, he encourages students to choose the College of Central Florida, to get involved on campus, and to stay connected with their community. Over the years, Sierra included, they say the same thing about him. He pushed me to my limits. He made me get out of my comfort zone. He believed in me. Well, I can tell you, we believe in him, too. It is our honor, and Sierra is going to present Ken McAtier with the Florida College System Student Government Association Bob Graham Distinguished Service Award. We were very lucky. Again, this is a statewide award, so, you know, there are nominees from all over the state. This year, the conference where this actual award was given just happened to be hosted at the College of Central Florida. Here in Ocala, we were able to tell a little fib to Mr. McAtier to get him there, because he didn't know that Sierra and several of his former students had nominated him. So we were able to share that moment with our colleagues across the state here in our own community. So we're very honored, and he will be honored again at the Board Meeting for, our Board of Trustees Meeting for the College of Central Florida towards the end of May, and I'll make sure and share that date with you all as well. So hopefully you can kind of come out to our end as well and see that. So thank you again for the time, and thank you for sharing, Mr. McAtier, with us.
Ken, we're not going to let you get away with that. You know, I've watched you over the years, and I've stood up in parades in Dunalan with you, and I always promised I would get over to see you. I think that students recognize what outstanding job that you have done. And I want to just congratulate you for all the students at Dunalan and Westport, because for a job well done. And a man of your stature need to be recognized, and I, and I take my hat off to you for a job well done. Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're going to move along. May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation acknowledging the National Day of Prayer being May fourth, 2017? Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. There's a opposed like sign. And the motion passed five-zero. Mr. Christian and Mr. Charles Fleming, Representative for Marion County National Day of Prayer Task Force, please come forward for reading the presentation of the proclamation.
This gentleman is a mainstay in this community, if you don't already know that. I've been with the district sixteen years, and I believe he's been here fifteen of those sixteen years because he was under the weather one time. But let me read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas the Congress of the United States passed a law proclaiming the first Thursday of each May as the National Day of Prayer. Whereas May fourth, 2017, is the day set aside for Americans of all denominations to unite and pray for our people, our leaders, and nation. Whereas the sixty-sixth consecutive observance of the National Day of Prayer recognizes the freedom to gather, worship, and pray. And whereas this year, we are united in our prayers for the safe return of our extended family members serving in our military overseas. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Marion County School Board acknowledges May fourth, 2017, as the National Day of Prayer, and joins all citizens of Marion County, the state, and the nation in observing this important occasion." And of course, it's dated and adopted this twenty-fifth day of April, 2017. So Mr. Fleming, on behalf of the Board and the Superintendent, let me share this with you, and I'm sure you're welcome to make any comments that you would like. If you'll step over here.
We sent these prayer to all the churches. And it's gratifying to see you and proclaim the National Day of Prayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your dedication.
Yeah. Mr. Fleming, I would also like to personally thank you for caring, and, and caring enough about your community to come before us and acknowledge that we're doing this. And I just asked that on, I believe it's next week, isn't it, when they actually have it? And please just continue to pray for us. We need it. Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing May ninth, 2017, as National Teacher Appreciation Day? Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. McCall. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. That a opposed like sign. I almost didn't do it because I'm looking at our. I know, I was like, this is going to be fun. And the motion passed five-zero. Will the following please join Mr. Christian at the podium for the reading and presentation of this proclamation? Ms. Lori Manresa, Hill Press School Principal, and Mr. Diego Fuentes, Marion County's 2017 Teacher of the Year.
Let me say, this is going to be a proclamation like no other. Just hats off for that. This proclamation reads, "Whereas teachers make public schools great. Whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams. Whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship. Whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. And whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Now therefore, we, the members of the Marion County School Board and Superintendent, serving as the policy and decision-makers for Marion County students, do hereby proclaim May ninth, 2017, as National Teacher Appreciation Day, and we urge others to observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of teachers on our lives." And each of you has proudly signed and dated this evening. So I'm going to present this to Mr. Diego Fuentes, 2017 Marion County Teacher of the Year. I'm sure that he will accept on behalf of our three thousand teachers district-wide. But he probably has a little different way of speaking to you tonight, of course.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm actually going to speak with my voice initially, and then with some music. On behalf of all the teachers of Marion County Public Schools, I'd like to say thank you to the School Board and Dr. Mayer for this proclamation, and for the labor that all of you do on behalf of teachers, support staff, students, and caregivers. I appreciate you allowing us a few moments to share our gratitude and perspective. First, I want to thank Ms. Manresa and Mr. Collins for making Everyday Teacher Appreciation Day, and Mrs. Anetti and the Public Education Foundation for showing your support and appreciation to teachers countywide and for Tools for Teachers, which is an amazing program. I want to take just a moment to thank a few of my teachers that made a difference in my life, and then we'll meet our real guest. I want to thank you, Mrs. Brown, for saving any extra milk left over so that I could take it home to my family. Thank you for doing that discreetly so as not to embarrass me. Thank you for teaching me kindness and sensitivity. Thank you, Mrs. Erickson, my second grade teacher, for encouraging me to love books and to read. Thank you for sending me home with extra milk as well. Apparently, I had a calcium deficiency problem I wasn't aware of. I thank Mr. Brown for encouraging me to do something different every weekend, for teaching us to work hard, not to judge, and to smile at the world. And thank you, Mr. Flynn, for reaching out to a messed-up kid, for seeing. for seeing past the facade of anger and destructiveness to the kid that really needed someone to believe in him. Thank you for the lunches, unmerited hall passes, letters of recommendation, and many laughs. Thank you for caring. And lastly, I'd like to thank my current teachers, the students in my classroom, every day at Hillcrest. And now, I'd like to introduce with a bit of fanfare first, one of the fine students of Hillcrest Schools, Megan Simons. Megan. She's not gonna just walk up, but she needs a little introductory fanfare, so we'll shoot with this in one moment. Megan will be graduating this year, and she's had many experiences with public speaking and is an avid Doctor Who fan. So, without any further ado, a bit of fanfare, and perhaps the thirteenth doctor. If you don't know what that means, you can Google it. There's a storyline there. I'm going to grab a very small ukulele. Empathies. Doctor Who.
Megan Simons. Hi, I'm Megan. I was twelve years old when I started going to Hillcrest School. I've had the most amazing teachers. We are not just a school, we are a Hillcrest family. Ms. Lori bought me old workbooks at a garage sale to help push me. Mr. Tremblin does fist bumps, and I had the honor of doing a speech to introduce him when he was the final five nominees for the Teacher of the Year. I also had the honor of dressing up like the Statue of Liberty and read a poem about our flag. I also got to lead the pledge at the last Veterans Day celebration at the Veterans Park. Mr. Marcelo, Ms. Todd, Ms. Carr were my pre-vocational teachers. I learned so much, thank you. I'll never forget the great memories. I'll never forget all the great memories. Ms. Bravo, I haven't forgotten you. Thank you for going above and beyond to see that I can get my dream job. She helped me get a volunteering position at the public library and guided me through the whole process. I love books, and I can't wait. Ms. Manresa, Ms. Collins, Mr. Collins, Ms. Tatro, and all the office staff, thank you for greeting me with a happy smile and love every day. When you are a student at Hillcrest, you are treated like a superstar. I do not talk about my accomplishments to brag. I am talking about them because if I went to my base high school, I would be pushed to the side or forgotten. More than likely, I would never be a part of this performance or production. During pep rallies on Fridays, we sang, danced, and we often dressed up and acted. All Miss Pepros, go Dragons! Our motto is, at Hillcrest is, "To try is everything." And I'll continue to try my best for all the days of my life. Thank you for everyone that had a part in my Hillcrest journey and for giving me the tools I need and the courage to try. I am graduating next month, and yes, I'm twenty-one years old. But I will always be a part of the Hillcrest family, and they will always be a part of me. I'd also like to thank Mr. Fuentes for inviting me this evening, and I really enjoyed his music class. Thank you.
So not fair. That is a hard act to follow. Superintendent Mayor and Madam Chair and Board Members, I would like to thank you for this opportunity and share with you that Megan is just one example of the beautiful students that walk our halls and share their unique differences with us every single day.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Every year, we come up with an acronym, and this year, the acronym for Hillcrest is PROUD. And PROUD stands for People Respecting Our Unique Differences. I believe it's a blessing to have been placed at Hillcrest seventeen years ago, and I get the opportunity to see some true magic happen. It's a place where teachers do amazing things, and it's where children overcome amazing obstacles. Megan is a clear example. I know that Hillcrest is not alone in what we experience. I am thankful that Mr. Fuentes walked through our doors. He is a teacher that has changed the lives of the students he teaches, as so many of the teachers in Marion County Public Schools do. Thank you.
I can't follow that at all, so we're not even gonna go there.
It's just going downhill.
Thank you very much. I know next week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. So, and we still, we value National Teacher Appreciation Day. It's not just a teacher, though. It takes a village from every person in our system. Doesn't matter whether they're the bus driver, or they're custodian, or they're the parent in the glass, or the people sitting up here. It's a whole team effort, and everybody works together for this, so thank you.
Any comment?
How do we comment?
I'm gonna comment because something stood out to me, and it was that... Well, first, I'm gonna start off with Megan. You are a rock star. You are a rock star. But then, also, Mr. Fuentes, he came up before us to tell us how much teachers appreciate us when truly it's the opposite. We appreciate you and every teacher in this county. And so, when you said that, it was just glaring at me that, in reality, it's reversed. So, thank you, and please tell the other three thousand that we are so appreciative of them all. And Ms. Manresa, I know I said Manresa. That's, I know, thank you. I apologize. Okay, well, thank you. And you're a terrific principal. It just, you're just wonderful, so thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Okay. In compliance with Florida's government and the Sunshine Law, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures ensure that our citizens have a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table near the door to this room. Completed speaker forms are due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called after I finish my remarks. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, speakers will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers and meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Verbal attacks, slanderous statements, and profanity are strictly prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks. To you.
Do we have any speakers?
Yes. Geraldine Palmer? Palmeier?
Good evening, Superintendent and staff. Madam Chair, members of the board. I come to speak on behalf of Catapult Academy. We have four programs in the county, Marion Oaks, Bellevue, Tucker Hill, and the Shores. Serve upwards of three hundred students. We have two shifts a day, the seven to twelve shift and the twelve to five shift. Our students come to us because they were not successful in other Marion County schools. Some of them had serious illnesses, and they lost precious time and fell by the way. They came to us because they could work at their own pace. Some of them continue to have serious issues, brain tumors, diabetes, anxiety, heart problems, seizures. We take them all. We have many students who were dismissed from their host high schools because they had turned eighteen and did not have the necessary credits to graduate and/or did not pass their state testing. But they knew a high school degree was important to them. They heard about Catapult. I speak for them, and I ask for continued funding for them. Why did they not succeed? Some of them missed important skills when they were in the lower grades. One young man who just became a father. His boy was a preemie. He had to take a week off to help his wife and young child. And he says, "But I still think I can complete my two credits and finish this year." He said, "I wish I had learned my math skills when I was younger. I was told I didn't need to know the multiplication table. I'm blind because of it." Other students have told us, "Nobody ever taught me comprehension." We all know that sixty percent of poor kids are never read to before they come to school. They are behind. And the important fact is, if by fourth grade, they have not moved from learning to read to reading to learn, they've missed out on comprehension skills. We, as teachers at Catapult Academy, spend precious time with each of them, teaching them critical skills. Many of our kids left high school, went to work, and discovered, "Minimum wage is not for me. I need my high school degree," and they are back with us. One young lady says, "I was born with a dwarfed arm. I was bullied. I couldn't survive. My parents got divorced. I was giving up on homeschooling. I was disheartened." She learned about Catapult. She has at least another year to go, and she's very successful. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't really have a comment, a question, I'm more of a comment because I think there's some confusion maybe because some emails that we have received and by your comments. Catapult has sent Marion County school systems a letter saying that they will not renew their contract after June 30th. So, it's a Catapult decision.
Because they were not given funding.
Because they weren't...
Giving sufficient funding and support to continue.
Mr. James?
Catapult generated its own FTE by the number of students.
Say that again, please.
Catapult generate their own FTE because they get their own students. We don't provide funding for them. Oh, there's a misconception here now. I got to note as well, Catapult chose not to come back to the Marion County school system, not the school system. Okay, one of the issues when I talked with them was the fact that they were looking for more than a one-year contract.
Yes.
Okay, and as a school district, we have a policy of not issuing anything but a one-year contract. So, that's the issue. Okay, it's not whether we are funding them because they generate their own funding. Okay, now, in terms of us recognizing the fact that they do have a niche in the school system, we do that. We do recognize that. But that was not a choice of the school system. That was a choice of Catapult.
Catapult was asking for a two-year contract because several of our sites need to be changed so that they meet the needs of the students better. And they felt as though a two-year contract would give them the stability to be able to do that.
That's not, Chair, I would just say, I'm not sure how much of this should take place in tonight's meeting. It's really an opportunity for public comment. And I don't think it's really the proper place to get into the details of a contractual matter.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna accept that recommendation. So, from this, at this moment, we won't have any more public discussion on that.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is also about Catapult.
Okay, well...
If it's gonna be on the same subject, I would have the same comments. If they were gonna speak as to the contract matter, I think we've heard that.
Okay.
Within your discretion, Madam Chair.
Yeah. If, who's the speaker?
You can ask them if that's what they intend to speak about.
TM Mullins? Hi, can you please come to the podium? Before you begin, are you gonna, are you speaking about the same matter that Ms. Palmer just did?
I was actually gonna speak about the same matter. I was actually a graduate from there.
Okay. All right, we'll give her that time.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I was actually a student at Catapult. When I was a teenager, my mother had a stroke. I'm sorry. And I lost a huge opportunity to graduate school because I had to drop out and help her. And at a certain point, I had gotten so far behind, I didn't think I was gonna make up for it. And I, I'm sorry. And this program gave me the opportunity to graduate and go back and finish and walk the stages and sell Utesorian. And now I can go to college and get the education I always wanted. And this program just did so much for me as a student. And I would like to see this continue for other students as well. And that's mostly what I was gonna say. My brother's actually attending right now, and he's in the same situation. He's gonna be able to finish on time, but I'd just like this to be able to continue for other people as well. And I just wanna thank you all for listening to me today.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thank you. That's it? Okay, we have no more speakers. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted? Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those I oppose like sign. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the Eagle Scout project to upgrade the press box at Booster Stadium? Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Dr. Mayor, you wish to share this Eagle Scout project with us?
I do, but first, I would like to introduce our own Eagle Scout, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Ham. He is, he's an Eagle Scout.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Madam Chair, Board Members, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce the principal at Vanguard High School who's going to talk to you about this Eagle Scout. As a member of the National Eagle Scout Association, Eagle Class of 1960, for those of you who might want to put it in perspective, I can tell you that achieving the rank of Eagle Scout is a rarity among all the young people who go into scouting. And it's impressive when a young man, especially with today's distractions, decides to stay focused and complete the program. And I'm just delighted to see this happen here in front of the board. So, Mr. Curley, if you would, please.
Good evening, Board Members, Madam Chairman, the Superintendent. Thank you for being here. I am not an Eagle Scout. I was, however, an Indian guide. I don't know how much that compares. It's actually a really, it is a real thing. I didn't make it up. We, obviously, as you know, we have a lot of incredible students throughout Marion County. I am partial, of course, to the ones that I serve right now at Vanguard High School and, of course, at the IB level. And then, when you take that to even another level of a Boy Scout, and then beyond that to a potential Eagle Scout, it really shows what this student has. There's a lot of things that we try to get done and need to get done, but when that student sees the need within his own school and then takes it upon himself to make his Eagle project, trying to better his school, I just don't know what other better representation... I just don't know what are, what other better representation of service there is, so. But you didn't come here to, to hear me, so at this time, I'm gonna invite David Kays up here to tell you a little bit about his Eagle Scout project.
Good evening, uh, Dr. Mayor and School Board Members. Thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to be here tonight. Uh, my name is David Kays. I'm a junior in the IB program and I'm a Life Scout pursuing Eagle Scout in Troop Seventy-two at First Presbyterian Church. So, my troop's meeting probably twenty minutes from now, hundred feet to the left, so. Uh, in order to attain the rank of Eagle, a scout must prove his leadership and dedication to his community by performing a service project. And for my Eagle Scout project, I would like to perform a general overhaul of the press box at Booster Stadium. So while the Eagle Project is my main goal in completing this, it does run a little deeper for me. Uh, in the late nineteen-sixties, my grandparents, Gene and Paul Edwards, joined with several other parents in the area to pursue construction of a stadium for Ocala's two new high schools, Forest and Vanguard, to share. They spent countless hours turning, um, donated property into Booster Stadium. I mean, it was wooded, it was wilderness. And they kinda had to carve out a spot for what Booster Stadium is today. Uh, when construction began in nineteen-sixty-nine, they spent pretty much every spare hour at the construction site. They helped clear the land, plant the sod, and lay the framework for what the stadium is now. Once the stadium was built, you know, there was a lot of extra work to do. My mom helped paint numbers on the bleachers. It were very ingrained into Booster Stadium and Vanguard High School as a whole. Uh, they helped, my grandparents also helped to run the concession stand. They made food for the football team and printed the programs every night. So, we've really put a lot of work and blood, sweat, and tears into this stadium, and I wanna help kinda make my mark on it. Uh, the work is honored today with a marker at Booster Stadium for being so integral to its construction. And during my three years on Vanguard's varsity soccer team, I've played many games at Booster Stadiums and my parents have kinda picked up the mantle and run the concession stand and, um, announced for the teams and done anything else we really needed to do. And that was really where I first recognized that the box might need an upgrade. It's pretty old. You can tell when you're looking at it, it's pretty old. So after taking a harder look, it would need to be done to the box. I've settled on a few key improvements that I'm looking to finish with this project. Mainly the windows, uh, new counters, floors, and branding. As it stands, it's not really, you're not really able to tell that it's Vanguard Stadium. It's kind of just blank. And it is Vanguard Stadium now, and I kinda want to make a mark. We, we want to show that it's Vanguard and we want to show that it's ours. So I've met with Mr. Curley, Vanguard's Principal, Mr. Marion's, School Board, Facility Staff and Workers, and several local, local business leaders to put together a feasible plan for my project. The proposed plan has been reviewed by Mr. Curley, Mr. Marion's, and the leadership of Troop Seventy-two to ensure that this is Eagle suitable. And with your approval, my hope is to plan, is to bring all these elements together and get this project done by June thirtieth. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I would like to thank Mr. Curley and Mr. Marion's for really encouraging me and helping to get this done. Thank you.
Any comments? Ms. Stacy?
I remember growing up, the, very few Eagle Scouts were finished at the end of the day. Many started, not that many finished. And I agree with Mr. Curley and whoever it was that talked about, or I guess, um, our Deputy Superintendent, that in these days, it's really, really hard to be so special and do everything so right. And you are such a leader to be able to stand where there's so many other things to do these days. There's so many options, and you choose to take a path of leadership. And you're, you're taking the weeds away. There's just not that many kids that do it these days, and young men. And I say, "young man." And so, thank you, and what a great project to do for your school and your family. And I know you've got some great family members.
Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
David, you probably don't remember this, but you sang with me when you were three years old. And I knew then you were gonna be really special. I'm so proud of the young man that you have turned out to be. I know your mom and dad very well. And, uh, congratulations to the two of you because you have done excellent job. I am so excited about this project. My husband and his six brothers all played ball at, well, not all of them. I guess five of them played ball at, um, Booster Stadium. So I remember sitting on those bleachers, and it is really time to do something with that. So, thank you for the foresight to do that, and congratulations. I'm so proud of you, David.
Mr. James?
I just wanna congratulate you for reaching the level of Eagle Scout because you join a group of very special people. And you will find they are, and I know you know this, they are all over the world, not just across the street over there because they are all over the world. And once you achieve that goal, you will be part of that. And Mr. Curley, you're missing, you missed a great thing by not becoming an Eagle Scout. And I just wanna just say to you, because I know how hard it was for you to, to get to this point and the many goals that you had to set in order to reach this. So, I just wanna congratulate you for all the kids that are, that will be looking up to you when you walk back over there. And again, just share with them your, your project.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Uh, David, I'm gonna tell you, congratulations. Uh, you're a wonderful young man. And I'm gonna ask that you stand right there while we vote, so you can actually say, "They voted in front of me, and we got it." There's, okay, so here we go. All those in favor, uh, for the Eagle Scout Project to upgrade the press box at Booster Stadium, um, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those that oppose, like, sign.
David, you can see it right here. It'll come up in just a minute.
And the motion passed five-zero. Congratulations. Thank you. That is awesome. May I have a motion to approve RFP three-six-four-one-RC and resulting agreement for fiber services to metropolitan area network schools? I need a motion in a second, please. Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Mr. James. Dr. Mayor, you wish to share the fiber services agreement to metropolitan area network schools with the City of Ocala?
Yes. Um, in our continuing effort to not only be fiscally responsible but to buy local, this new partnership with the City of Ocala is a win-win for everybody. It's gonna be a win-win on the, um, fiscally responsible and, uh, electronic side of the house as well as continuing that, um, partnership with the City of Ocala. So, Mr. Hanson is gonna explain more about this.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, Madam Chair and Board Members. Uh, this is exciting. A lot of work went into this, uh, proposal. Uh, the partnership that we're entering into, uh, with the City of Ocala and, uh, some of the team members that we, uh, have met with through this process are here tonight. Just an outstanding reinvestment in our community. Uh, this is a big deal. It's a one-point-two-million-dollar contract in which we'll receive an E-rate revenue back to our school districts approximately one-point-one-million dollars that will go back into our general fund, uh, into our budget. So, again, this will touch forty-seven schools. The City of Ocala currently provides services, as you know, in another contract for our Donellen area schools. Uh, it includes all schools with the exception of Reddick Collier, which we, uh, provided by another provider at this time. First, let me just say the City of Ocala sent in an outstanding proposal, one in which, uh, a number of things that we'll be able to leverage in the future moving forward. And one of the things I wanna point out in their proposal that we thought was very interesting is they're going to be able to provide, uh, priority services when we do have to open up our shelters, which we've never had before. So those priority school shelters, emergency shelters that we have, connectivity and network connectivity during that time is very important. And they've made it a priority to ensure that we have services during even, even those times of inclement weather. So again, I don't know, Mel, if you'd like to come up and say a word or two? Uh, Mel, has, Mel and Arnie have been instrumental in making this happen. And again, I think if I had to summarize, this is a, this is a reinvestment in our community and just an outstanding partnership. Mel Pace?
And Mr. Hanson, would you introduce him and what his position is with the...
Yes. Mel oversees the telecommunications department for the City of Ocala. Mel?
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, uh, Board Members, Superintendent. I'd like to echo what you said about, um, keeping the dollars home as one of our strategic goals in the city. Being an economic hub is one of those goals and operational excellence. So, when Scott challenged us to, um, kinda provide this service to you guys, we were excited. It's a very, um, challenging, detailed project that we're looking forward to, um, heading off a turnkey project for you guys, uh, in the, in the near future, next few months, actually. So, um, we look forward to the challenge, and I think you'll be, uh, very satisfied with the service that we'll provide you.
So tonight, we'll, we'll start, you know, after, after your approval, of course. We'll get to work, uh, and these services will go live one July of twenty-eighteen. A lot of work to be done in, in the next twelve months or so. But, uh, these guys along with our team, I'd like to also recognize Ed Beers, Gary McCallum, and Anthony Clark on our team. They did an outstanding job, uh, and they were a big part of, as well as the members of Mel's team. So this, this is a big deal for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, what about, this would include the Romeo?
So currently, the City of Ocala provides services in another contract that the board has approved. So those schools are included, not in this particular contract, but in the existing contract that, that the board, that you've already approved.
Okay, Romeo?
Romeo is included as well. All the Donellen schools, including Romeo.
Okay, so we're, we're bringing fiber out from Ocala to there?
So we already have fiber there. On the City of Ocala, they, basically, the, the contract that you once knew of is Greenlight. The city has taken over that contract, and they provide those services. They're providing outstanding services to us today, uh, for those schools. It's just a separate contract. These are our forty-seven schools and district locations. Thank you.
Questions? Nope. Okay, we're good.
Don't go far, Scott.
Yeah. All right, so we're gonna vote. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and those that oppose, like, sign.
Thank you.
And it looks like we're keeping the dollars home. The motion passed five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen digital classroom plan? Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Dr. Mayor, you wish to share the digital classroom plan with the public?
Mr. Hanson, would you do so, please?
Yes. So the sixteen-seventeen digital classroom, another exciting item. So this is a big night for, uh, for our school system. The DCP plan is going to deliver, uh, just over thirty-five-hundred devices to twenty-nine different schools. It's going to address equity of access across all of our schools. And I think more importantly, moving forward, um, the mobile device initiative that Superintendent has for our students, this is a huge part in a start in doing that. Along with, obviously, what we're doing at Evergreen and the School for the Gifted as well, and the one-to-one, uh, device initiative. So again, this is a big deal. This will take these thirty-five, the procurement of these thirty-five-hundred devices will take our school system. We'll now have, um, just right at, right about twenty-seven-thousand student devices, um, for our school district. And our student-to-computer ratio, uh, will go from about one-point-seven-eight to one-point-five-five. Uh, so we're getting very close to that one-to-one initiative across our entire school district as we continue to move forward, uh, with the Superintendent's vision of mobile devices and a, and a device in the hands of every student. So, again, this is a big deal for us. Uh, this will impact twenty-nine of our schools.
Thank you. Any comment? I see, and then, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those that oppose, like, sign. And the motion passed five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the grand application teacher and school leader initiative grant? Incentives, excuse me. I'm making up my own words. May I have a motion in a second? Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Dr. Mayor, you wish to share the teacher and school leader incentive grant with the public?
Yes, please. As we continue to hear legislative updates and get budget updates from, um, our state, we know that the news is, is less than good. It's bad. It looks like next year's funding is going to be equal to this year's funding, if we're lucky, which means no, no cost of living, no rollover, no extra money. So, as we go back and look at our staffing plan and as we are diligently scrubbing our staffing plan and we are defunding district-level positions and reallocating resources at the schools, our commitment to our teachers stays. And we are committed to providing them with quality professional development. We are committed to providing opportunities that will retain our certified teachers, our high-quality teachers, and will help us to recruit even more highly qualified teachers. So with that, under the leadership of Dr. Underwood, um, and Renee Senjens, uh, I would like them to share with you this initiative and this grant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor, and good evening again, Board, and Mr. Lake. It is a pleasure to share with you, um, a project that we believe will expand, enhance, and provide new opportunities for a direction that the district has already embarked upon. And that is to fully staff our classrooms with competent, highly qualified, excellent teachers and our schools with highly qualified, competent leaders. So I'd like to just briefly give you an overview of what the grant covers. It is a nationally competitive grant. So while we, um, are in competition with other states and other districts in the state of Florida, we are very confident that our grant will stand up to those. We've done some research and looked at other states who have grants that encompass some of our components and perhaps some not as well as we've covered, and they have been funded. So we're very encouraged for what this grant is going to be able to do. It's a five-year plan, and we've, we've named it the Marion Choose, Inspire, and Succeed Grant. So, it focuses on leadership development and a human capital management system. Those are the two priority, um, projects. So I'd like to tell you just a little bit about what the project covers and what benefit it is to Marion County. Why, why is this beneficial to us? We, we begin, the, the project covers from recruitment to placing those teachers in the classroom and then, more importantly, supporting them and ensuring that we've got quality teaching, supporting the teachers who need assistance, and enhancing those teachers that, that are, are soaring ahead and would like to improve. The, one of the most important pieces that I think I would like to highlight is a Growing Your Own Initiative. And that is an initiative that we've talked with Mark Vianello about to expand the vocational program for the teacher assisting at our high schools and offering seniors in that program an opportunity much like the foundation offers opportunities to those seniors that succeed in their program with scholarships for one of our local universities and a promise of employment in Marion County when they, when they graduate, offering them a mentor through that project. We feel very strongly that if we grow our own and support those students here, we can expand our, our teacher ranks. We're looking for, um, a strong recruiting effort, much like what Stephanie Callaway has done for us this year. She's done an awesome job in, in doing something that we haven't done for many years since, since we, we cut that, that position in our first round of budget cuts. So we're, we're looking at expanding that. And we're, in addition to an intern support program, we're looking at expanding the National Board Certification Program once again that went away when the money at, at DOE went away. And so we're looking to expand that to offer those teachers assistance again financially because it is a very expensive process. It's also very time-consuming. So we're looking at, at offering them not only financial support but mentoring support. So, so the benefits to the district, I, I think are very, very evident. The human capital management system is one that we haven't talked very much about. But the only piece that we have to this is what's required in law, and that is our pay-for-performance for, for individuals to reward them for excellent performance, both teacher and administrator. But this system will offer an opportunity for our excellent teachers to stay in the classroom, and it will provide them a career... classroom and it will provide them a career path to move ahead, to expand their potential, to expand their earnings without leaving the classroom. Because right now, the only way in our system for a teacher to earn more is to leave the classroom. And that is something we're trying to stop or we'll continually be in this position of trying to fill empty slots at the start of every year. So we, we're looking at building that through the assistance of an outside consultant group that would help us to look at what we have here in Marion County, develop what we need, what it looks like here, not a universal cookie cutter approach, but what Marion County needs, what we want to do, what our board considers important for enabling teachers to move on and move ahead and administrators to move on and move ahead. What is that career path? This shows you a visual of the goal, which is the fully-staffed schools with competent teachers and administrators. And all those pieces, they are all interconnected, they all interrelate, and really, no one of them can stand alone because without all of them functioning together, as our program has outlined, the success doesn't happen in the center. So that gives you a visual of all the different pieces. I'd like to let Renee talk about the budgetary items and the sustainability.
Madam Chair, Dr. Mayor, and Board. Basically, I think Dr. Underwood did a wonderful job. Basically, for the sustainability, if you think about it, it's kind of that vision that's the fully-staffed schools with competent teachers and competent leaders. Once you have that professional culture, which will take time, you did note that it was for five years. So over that time, once you get that professional culture, you'll have those high expectations for student achievement. You'll have that common mission of effective instruction and you'll have that accountability piece, you know? That piece in and of itself, over five years, sustains this program substantially. Like Dr. Underwood said, those teachers will remain in the classroom, the recruiter will, I don't want to say they won't be necessary, but people will want to come to Marion County because they have high-quality teachers with supportive leaders. So some of those pieces will just kind of fade away based on attrition and how the program will actually build our own and grow our own and almost become, well, a human capital system that works. A lot of, and I don't know how much you found out about that, but a lot of the districts now are really entertaining those capital, human capital systems simply because of the budgetary cuts. It becomes, it becomes the system of employment and teachers and everything, as we know, is 85% of our budget. It's huge. So what it does is it shows you where to sustain, where to find the talent, where to place the talent, where to manage the talent, and how to grow that talent. And that all becomes out of that consultant. So after we have their services, that obviously piece will be gone and then we'll have another people that'll help, you know, with the integrated, integrator reliability for evaluations for teachers, which again, once again, will be all those incentives that Dr. Underwood spoke about. So really, what is amazing to me, when I get to write a grant and help with a grant with them like this, we already have the initiative happening and it's like, all of a sudden, this grant is available to support that for us over that five years. So I'm really glad to be a part of that.
Any questions or comments? Well done. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those that oppose, like, sign. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the internal audit for Evergreen Elementary School? Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. Dr. Mayor, you wanted to share with the public the internal audit for Evergreen Elementary School for the 2014-2015 year.
Yes, we do, and I would just like the Board to look at Ms. Boston Ellis's face because she's smiling. Come on up, Ms. Boston Ellis and Ms. Corrigan, and share this awesome news.
You ladies have some new moves.
When she's happy, we're all happy.
What an exciting evening. And the topic was money. Grants. It's just been awesome. But our principals and our secretary bookkeepers have an awesome responsibility. And in addition to those things, they have to be fiscally sound. They have to keep up with their instructional dollars and they also have to keep up with their internal dollars. And we have, we actually have two schools that we want to recognize tonight. We have a small internal audit department, there's three of them, and they do an awesome job. And I'll introduce, again, Christine Corrigan, and then she'll introduce our principals and secretaries.
Good evening. I would like to, may I introduce to you tonight the secretary from Evergreen Elementary, Valerie Landreth, their current principal, Mr. Wayne Livingston. For Sunrise Elementary, for Sunrise Elementary, their secretary for part of 1516 school year was Betsy Valdez, and the current secretary, Lori Hunter, and their current principal, Ms. Jennifer Beck. Congratulations. Thank you for the great work that you did for those years and what you still do for our students every single day.
Could you explain what was so good?
Oh, yes. They had, they had perfect audits, which means that they met all of the red book, Florida statute, and board policy requirements that were necessary to have internal accounts.
Before you guys completely take off, I just, I say this every time, because it's not very often, but when it does, to receive a perfect audit is a lot of hard work when you think about that many teachers and incoming components and money and documentation. So you guys are doing something right, which means you're doing a good job communicating with your teachers that are holding that money and getting you, getting that money to you in a timely manner and documentation, it's just, it's difficult. So I commend you guys. Thank you. All right. Are we gonna go through the second one then? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the internal audit for Sunrise Elementary School? Remember, I just asked you? Here we are, okay. You still wanna have?
She combined them, yeah.
Yeah, so we're just gonna move on.
Thank you. It was all the happiness.
They left. So we're gonna go ahead and vote. Do you guys have any discussion?
No.
Okay. Just again, they're doing an outstanding job.
Do you need a motion on Sunrise?
Oh, I do.
I'll move.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And the motion passed five zero. At this time, I would like to recognize Superintendent Mayor.
I requested the Chair declare good cause due to legislator deadlines to discuss an emergency item regarding the proposed resolution 17-02 Local Decision Making.
I declare good cause.
I recommend a motion be made to approve Resolution 1702 Local Decision Making. This resolution signals legislators to allow the School Board of Marion County, Florida to maintain local control of its workforce, which will allow the retention of our effective teachers.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation? Moved by Ms. Boynton and seconded by Ms. Stacy. And Mr. Christian, could I ask you to please come and read the proclamation? Thank you.
This is actually entitled a resolution.
Resolution? Okay, thank you. We're kind of winging it.
It's titled Local Decision Making and it reads as follows. Whereas retaining qualified teachers to create and maintain a stable school environment for our students should be a top priority in our public schools. Whereas Florida has teacher retention and recruitment problems. Whereas all students deserve a caring, qualified, and committed teacher, treating teachers as valuable and respected professionals with job security is in the best interest of our students. Whereas the lack of job security in today's teaching profession discourages the best teachers to apply for positions or remain in the profession. And whereas the Florida Legislature is considering legislation which would strip local school districts from offering various forms of job security to teachers receiving, quote, "highly effective" or "effective" ratings, end quote, with no other cause for dismissal. Now therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of Marion County, Florida strongly opposes the passage of House Bill 373 and Senate Bill 856. Be it further resolved, the School Board of Marion County, Florida implores Florida's elected leaders to respect local decision-making and allow superintendents and districts to use the award of job security to high-performing teachers as a tool to attract and retain highly quali, hi, I'm sorry, to retain high-quality teachers. Be it finally resolved, the School Board of Marion County, Florida urges Florida legislators to support and encourage acceptable solutions to attract, support, and retain Florida's high-quality educators. And you each have signed this resolution and dated it this evening.
Thank you. And then I would also like to invite Mr. Avery. Have, has there been any discussion or Dr. Ham? Dr. Ham?
To put this in an historical perspective, since 2011, we have had a situation where the law changed and there was no longer professional service contract status granted to a teacher. And that actually affected teachers that had been hired after 2008. As a result of that, the due process rights for dismissal went away. And the resultant contract that we give to all teachers now is a one-year annual contract. Since 2011, the attrition rate of teachers has increased. We believe that part of the reason that has happened is that every spring, those annual contract teachers are left twisting in the wind, unsure of whether their community is going to invite them back for the next school year. The negative effects of that uncertainty cause young people to look at other options for a career, at work in other places, and obviously, they resist becoming more deeply embedded in the community through our community groups and organizations. And they're hesitant to do the things that normal professionals do when they settle in a community, perhaps to buy a home and to take out a mortgage. We know what the housing stock situation looks like in Marion County. And to bring 200 to 300 young professionals into the county every year and then watch them leave is disheartening. As a result of that, three years ago, we negotiated a language in the collective bargaining agreement that didn't tie your hands as a board, but basically, it sent a signal to our effective and highly effective teachers that provided they had not been disciplined for misconduct, that they hadn't proceeded beyond step two of progressive discipline, which is a learning process, and provided that we weren't in a layoff situation where money did not permit us to hire them all back, they could reasonably expect to have their annual contract renewed in the subsequent year if their principal's evaluation for that year was effective or highly effective. As a result of that, we've had a competitive advantage in recruiting teachers to come to Marion County. One has to believe that young, educated professionals, looking at where they want to go to work, are going to look at the contract under which they're going to be employed. Some counties have lobbied against that language and have convinced the legislature that this is in some way tying your hands as a board on renewing or not renewing teachers and that that's somehow a bad thing. And so the bills that we've asked you to indicate your opposition to would prohibit a school board from having such language in their contract. The reality is that all that language does is move ahead the point in time when those people can start to breathe, when they can start to relax and presume that they're going to be around for another year. That happens to coincide with the exact same time of the year when we're giving high-stakes tests to students, when we want teachers to be at their best and to be relaxed. And why wouldn't you want your young, successful professionals to feel welcome and to stay? That's why this resolution merely signals to our delegation and to key committee members in the legislature that we don't need to be micromanaged in terms of our human capital decisions. We've got this. You still have the power. This does not in any way limit your ability to renew or to not renew an annual contract. What it does do is send a clear message to our young professionals and we appreciate your support of the resolution.
Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the motion passed five zero. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, May 4, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss long-range planning. Okay, and we're gonna move along for our committee reports and concerns. No?
Donations.
Donations. Let me see. What page are they on? They're not.
I can open them up for you.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Actually, you can't.
Can they pull them?
Want me just go to the website?
Yes.
Thanks, Ann.
You're welcome. You looked bored. Oh, I'm sorry. I have it. Can you see it on your screen if I open it up this way?
You can try, or?
I mean, on yours.
You want me to pull it up on my screen or?
It won't work this way.
Let me see if I can.
When you're looking at the motion, if you click content, you have a tab that says content.
Hold on, let me see. Let me look.
Oh, here it is, right here. If we just click on it?
Okay, all right, y'all gonna have to bear with me. I might need Dr. Mayor's glasses. Let me see if they help.
She's got it, she's got it.
Let me see.
There you go.
All right. All right, here we go. May I have a motion in a second to? That's right, there's nothing wrong with that. Thank you. For the donations, for 2,500 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from their business partner, Dr. Jones Orthodontics, via the Public Education Foundation. 1,000 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from Lockheed Martin. Furniture, storage bins, and Legos valued at $2,205.27 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from Ocala Plastic Surgery. $1,000 to East Marion Elementary School from Circle K. $1,000 to Emerald Shores Elementary School from Lockheed Martin. $4,000 to Emerald Shores Elementary from their business partner Closet Made Corporation via the Public Education Foundation. $1,000 to Forest High School from the Robotics District Grant from Lockheed Martin via Public Education Foundation. $13,000 to Lake Weir Middle School from their business partner Closet Made Corporation via the Public Education Foundation. $5,000 to Marion Technical Institute from Lockheed Martin via the Public Education Foundation. Thoroughbred mare and foal due to be born the end of April valued at $7,500 to North Marion High School from Bobby Jones Equine. Okay, give me a second, I gotta scroll up a little bit. $1,000 to Vanguard High School-
It, we never get tired of saying thank you to our community for all the support that you give our schools. Our schools are so much better because of your community's support. They would not be, be able to do some of those special things that they like to do. So, thank you, thank you, Ann, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we're gonna move along to our, um, we're gonna do our committee reports and then move to our, okay, our committee reports and concerns from our board members. And Ms. McCall will begin with you.
Sure. I attended Legacy Elementary SIC Committee meeting and was so thrilled with a program that they're doing that I just had to mention it tonight so that parents could hear. And a special thank you to Ms. Prestapino and her staff. They have two programs. One is called Pride. It's the Pride Club, and it is for their young men. Pride stands for Poise, Respect, Determination, and Etiquette. And then there's the Paw Club, which is promoting awe-inspiring women for their girls. What these two clubs do, students that oftentimes struggle with following directions, struggle with showing respect, and oftentimes are disruptive in the classroom, these are the students that are referred to these clubs. And these young people are learning respect, they're learning etiquette, they're learning those soft skills.
I love soft skills.
That we, that, that we love. The young men receive a purple tie with L.E.S. engraved on it. The Girls Club has just started this year. But they are beginning to see a difference in these students. And last year, these young men, of course, our wonderful sponsor Mojo that steps up to the plate for so many things, he hosted these young men and their mothers, along with the principal and her staff, to his restaurant. And the young men were dressed in their shirts and their ties and were most respectful with their mothers. So, many of these young men are fatherless, and so it's really making a difference in these young boys and these young girls' lives. So, I just wanted to give kudos to Legacy Elementary because it truly is making a difference for these students. So, and that will make a difference for the rest of their lives. So, thank you, Ms. Prestapino.
Ms. Boynton? Mr. James?
I'd just like to take a moment to publicly thank Mr. Lake. I know it's getting close to his last time around. You know, being the first to do something, and you were our first school board appointed attorney, and I had the opportunity to work with you as, as chair. And I know how difficult it was at times, but you survived. And you managed to, and you managed to put us in the right, in the right frame, or moving us in the right direction. It'll be a lot easier for the person that's coming behind you. So I just wanted to publicly thank you on behalf of all the chairs that have worked with you, because being the first to do something in a, in a, in a new arena is difficult. Ask the Tampa Bay Buccaneers how difficult it was when they first started, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate that.
Okay.
And the board.
I just wanted to, I have to say what I have to say. I had an opportunity to talk with Dr. Grantham about the moves that was made, and I just want to commend him for saying that he, he was take the brunt of whatever come, good, bad, or indifference. I did understand his moves, and I, and I appreciate you, you sharing with, sharing it with me. And I, I just want to share this with the people that called me about the various things that's going on. And one of the things that we talked about was nepotism. Okay, it's very clear in terms of what our definition of nepotism is. And I would like to tell all those people that's out there, you see what's out there. You see what is occurring. You can call a duck whatever. If it walk like a duck, it quack like a duck, it's a duck. So I don't want you to change your opinion about seeing something that's, that's a, that's something that doesn't, that's not a duck, but it is a duck. So you know what it is. But by the same token, I will tell you that I see some great things, and I want to commend everybody because we're moving in the right direction. I do not want us to lose our traction sometime if we call a duck a pig, because a duck is a duck. And I just want everybody to know that I did get your calls. I resent that. I feel real bad about the fact that you have to call me on cellphone now because you're getting a uneasy feeling. But I do know, and I do feel that we're moving in a very positive way, but I have to call what I see. So, again, that's where I am.
Well, last week, I went to a presentation of one of our teachers as one of the Governor's Appreciation Resolutions as a volunteer. And we will be talking more about that the next board meeting because I've asked her, I've asked Dr. Mayor to consider putting this on the agenda to, and so I won't even tell you her name right now, but one of our teachers. So I was able to go to the county commission as she received her award there. Also attended the Holy Cross Remembrance that our school system took part in this, this year. I've been working with Debbie Sephar to try and get the district to come on with this since I've been on the school board with no success. And now, Dr. Mayor was there, she spoke, we are now on, and, um, I got to hear the survivor of the Holocaust, and it was an incredible, incredible story. And another thing I feel strongly about that I want to talk about, that, um, two things now, I'm gonna dovetail off of Mr. James. Regarding promotions and that sort of thing, I have watched in this district for, since 1989, as promotions have been made based upon who supported which person in political races. I think that's just as, that, I, I think that's about as bad as it gets. And not promoting people who were deserving of the job, but who held the most campaign signs and that sort of thing. And I think that that practice is what has gotten us into the depth of despair this district has gotten in to where we are now ranked among the lowest in the state. I want to thank Dr. Grantham and Dr. Mayor for moving us beyond that, because there were people that were promoted in this recent promotion, because I read the list and I watched the list, who did not support Dr. Mayor in her campaign, and in fact, worked tirelessly against Dr. Mayor. And she promoted them, and she moved them forward, because she moved them based upon their merit, not because of the support that she received on the campaign trail. So, I believe now we have moved to a new, a new time where we almost are operating with an appointed superintendent-type mindset, where we are promoted based upon our talents and not based upon political appointees. So I thank you, Dr. Mayor and Dr. Grantham, for that. Now, I want to comment also on our proclamation tonight regarding the teachers. And if someone wants to send a YouTube of this meeting, because to somebody up in Tallahassee, I am a conservative and never been known as a union supporter, but I support teachers. And any district in the state or their administrators who are opposed to giving our teachers something that is absolutely free, doesn't affect our budget at all, has obviously overrated their importance as compared to the historical importance to the teachers who are currently in the deepest trenches they have ever been tread, they've ever treaded through. So, anyone on television, Dennis Baxley, someone might forward this to you, please send the word that if administrators will not give something to the people who have made a difference in America that costs them nothing, they need to go find a new career. Thank you.
Mr. Lake?
Good, thank you.
Ms. Julie?
I'm fine, thank you. Happy birthday, Mr. James.
Yeah, though all these...
Oh, yes. There's a little story behind this.
There's a chicken in there.
No, no. They are freshly baked cinnamon rolls, and there's a story. There's a story.
Okay, this why you had the pheasant in color?
No, oh, no, no. There's a story. So Mrs. King and I had a trip to MTC, Marion Technical College, today, which we're gonna share about in just a moment. So, we had planned this trip, and so we gave heads up to Chef at MTC, because we remembered that when you joined us for the unveiling of the lead model that Mr. Vianello did with the audit of our vocational programs, you had great conversation with Chef that evening. And he had shared that with me after and said that you talked about him going to North Marion. So, we let Chef know, we were celebrating your birthday this evening, he made you freshly baked cinnamon rolls, and he made sure that you had North Marion colors on the box to remind you of him. Yes, yes. So happy birthday, Mr. James, happy birthday. It's a pleasure. So Mrs. King and I went to Marion Technical College today, and in the spirit of our vocational programs where we, we show relevance...
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
We got pretty pink princess toes. So, our cosmetology department does pedicures, manicures, as well as, as beautiful hair. Yes, and you get to pick out your color, and so it was great. The students there, I had Sarah, you had Myra.
Yes, I did.
Is Kevin still standing? Okay.
I'm just checking to make sure we have that shot.
Okay. We're not doing it again.
But Sarah and Myra, and they took excellent care of us, and as we were getting our, our toes done, we were talking with the ladies. Do you know they have over an eighty-five percent placement rate? And that group there, they're so cohesive, and Ms. Rochelle was, was doing hair extensions in one room, and just the conversation and the engagement and the relevance, these ladies are ready to go to work, and they even have gentlemen in the program. So we're really pleased to be able to share that firsthand, that experience with you, and they do take appointments. So if you'll give us a call, six seven one, seven seven zero zero, we will connect you to Marion Technical College, where you too can have pretty pink princess toes. Okay. We were talking earlier and mentioned a teacher recruiting and retaining, and we also mentioned Stephanie Callaway. And Stephanie joined us in the district office around Christmas time and has been working tirelessly, along with the rest of the HR department, to ensure that we will have teachers for next year. Again, we are moving forward with a proactive stance instead of a reactive knee-jerk reaction when we come up short with teachers. I needed to share with you, board, that because of Ms. Callaway's ventures, which are explained here on this paper, we will not have to have the CF Recruitment Fair that we normally do in the springtime. Because we are not pursuing the CF Recruitment Fair and due to other, other things that Ms. Callaway has done in proactive recruiting, we have saved over thirty-five thousand dollars in that. Yes. And we, we are, we think we are very good with our teachers for next year. We will continue to advertise, and as you see the recruitment events that are listed on this sheet, Ms. Callaway went to all of them, along with many members of our staff, along with David Steffi, who was one of our Marion County Golden Apple Teachers of the Year. So, we were out there proactively recruiting high-quality teachers as we also make sure that we are retaining them with excellent professional development and other opportunities within our schools. So we're very excited about that. Our books this evening, I wanted to share, as we get ready for summer, because summer is almost here, and we look at students who leave us and do not have access to books and libraries over the summer, and with the work of Richard Allington, who is, is one of my, one of my idols, who is just a great man, and he says that just get 'em to read, just get 'em to read. And we, we want to push the novels and what we call quality literature, but just get 'em to read, because reading should touch the heart. And it made me think about some books that surprised me a bit after I had read them. One of them was a series by Ezra Jack Keats, and I'm sure many of you know him. You, you probably taught with him in your classroom, didn't you? But Ezra Jack Keats did a whole series on Peter, and Peter's a young African-American boy who lives in the city and has many adventures. His most famous one is The Snowy Day. You know, don't you? You read it to your grandkids. I read these growing up, and I, I read them in college when I started my children's lit methods courses. And that's when I found out that Ezra Jack Keats was white. I didn't know. I didn't know until I took children's lit that he was a white man, but was so able to portray the African-American culture that way. All I knew was that it touched my heart. These books just touched my heart. And I got to thinking too about Essie Hinton and the book The Outsiders, which is celebrating its fiftieth anniversary. This book was published fifty years ago. And I'm looking again because it was a book first, students, it was a book first before it became a movie. And I didn't know, Ms. Rosky's shaking her head, I didn't know either until I was in my children's lit class in college, that she was a sixteen-year-old female when she wrote this book, but she portrays young, high-school-aged boys who are not making the best choices in their life, but portrayed it so realistically. So again, it often goes past what the AR level is and the AR points or the reading level, the Lexi level, when you're looking at books. And it goes back to what Dr. Allington said, just read and read so it touches your heart. So I just wanted to share that this evening. Thank you, Mrs. King.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Mayor, I don't want you to get any ideas and leave us to become a foot model.
Okay.
Got it?
Okay.
I was like, no one got my joke. And now you guys laugh. Okay. I also, I just want to say that Dr. Mayor and I had a wonderful time out at MTC today in the cosmetology department. Sarah and Myra, they answered all of our questions, and they dealt with our feet. While they're answering our questions, and they were just, I can tell that when they graduate next month, that they're gonna go out and make excellent, um, and workers. I don't know what I'm trying to say. But I also want to add that if anybody is interested in cosmetology, including hair, skin, nail services, you could take day classes or night classes. And if you prefer the day classes, it's just an eleven-month program. The classes are from eight to four P.M. Or if you choose to do the night classes, it is a sixteen-month course, and that would be from five to ten P.M. Again, thank you, they did a great job, and I look forward to our next adventure. Mr. Lake, I personally would like to thank you. I know you're getting ready to embark on your retirement and enjoy vacation or just doing whatever you want to do. And as Mr. James said, you were the first one to come in, and you had to pave a lot of roads. And so we're appreciative of that, and thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you, board. Appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you. It was a fast two and a half years.
Yeah, it did. It flew by. We kind of, we came on together. So...
Thanks so much.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I also would like to remind everyone that attendance counts. I know it's the end of the year, and it can be a struggle. The sun is out, the weather is glorious and perfect, but we're almost there. And so with that, we're gonna move along. And, oh, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board has received an alternative placement list for students through April 7th, 2017.
Again, thank you, they did a great job, and I look forward to our next adventure. Mr. Lake, I personally would like to thank you. I know you're getting ready to embark on your retirement and enjoy vacation or just doing whatever you wanna do. And as Mr. James said, you were the first one to come in, and you had to pave a lot of roads. And so, we're appreciative of that, and thank you.
You're very welcome, board. Appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you. It was a fast two and a half years.
It did, it flew by, we kinda, we came on together. So...
Thanks so much.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I also would like to remind everyone that attendance counts. I know it's the end of the year, and it can be a struggle, the sun is out, the weather is glorious and perfect, but we're almost there. And so, with that, we're gonna move along. And, oh, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board has received an alternative placement list for students through April seventh, twenty-seventeen. Ms. Shuli, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter? You haven't received any? Okay. Before approving the expulsions on the agenda this evening, Dr. Dama Absher, Director of Alternative Learning, has requested to address the board. Good evening.
Good evening, Superintendent, Madam Chair, and Board Members. I'd like to take this opportunity to share a few things related to discipline and expulsion matters. As you're aware, we had no school board meeting during spring break. And then the meeting that we had just after that, there were no expulsions brought to the board. Unfortunately, there are a large number of expulsions that we are bringing to the board to vote on this evening. So, in light of that, we thought it was important to share just some general information. One of those points being that we did have a couple of weeks there where we're kinda playing catch-up. So, there is an inflated number this evening. However, another point we'd like to make is several of the expulsions that are being brought to you this evening involve incidents where one incident included multiple students. For example, at one of our campuses, what began as a disagreement between two students, a few other students jumped in, and now we're bringing to you seven students who are being recommended for a major campus disruption that really should've stayed much less involved. So, that being said, we also feel it's important that we adhere to the student code of conduct that is board-approved, and a great deal of time and effort goes into the revision of that code of conduct each year. We have a diverse group of folks that come together and make recommendations and include various stakeholders such as the community, families, parents, students, teachers, discipline leaders, and administrators. So, we want to take that very seriously and enforce that consistently when students do violate the code of conduct. And we wanna also remind our school leaders to ensure that students are aware of those types of infractions that will warrant a recommendation for expulsion, the behaviors that will not be tolerated on our campuses. That being said, it is also important to remember, of all of the many students that we have in our school system, the number of students that come to you for an expulsion is, and this is difficult to say, it's, it's well under one percent, it's one-tenth of point-five percent of our students. So, in the grand scheme of things, ninety-nine percent of our students do the right things every day in our schools. Unfortunately, these are the students that, that you all see and vote upon, the, the infractions. But for the most part, most of our students are doing the right things, and we want to continue acknowledging that as well. Any questions?
Any questions? You know, Dama, while I have you there, and, and you don't have to answer this now, but for later, it is a small percentage of students that do that. Has there ever been any research or anything where you know exactly how much time and cost that it is costing Marion County schools? And that, you can answer that later, but I think that it's important that we investigate that 'cause it is such a minute amount of students. But what, I'm just kinda curious what it is costing us.
Time and effort, absolutely. We can look into that and provide that for you.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move along. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. seventeen-eight-six E. with educational services through the first semester of the twenty-seventeen-twenty-eighteen school year. Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And the motion passed five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsions of students J.D. seventeen-dash-seventy-nine, J.D. seventeen-dash-eighty, seventeen-dash-eighty-one, seventeen-dash-eighty-two, seventeen-dash-eighty-three, J.D. seventeen-dash-eighty-four, J.D. seventeen-dash-eighty-five, J.D. seventeen-dash-eighty-seven E. J.D. seventeen-dash-eighty-nine, J.D. seventeen-dash-ninety, J.D. seventeen-dash-ninety-one, J.D. seventeen-dash-ninety-two, J.D. seventeen-dash-ninety-four, J.D. seventeen-dash-ninety-five, J.D. seventeen-dash-ninety-six, J.D. seventeen-dash-ninety-eight, J.D. seventeen-dash-one-zero-two, J.D. seventeen-dash-one-zero-five, with educational services through the seventeen, twenty-seventeen-twenty-eighteen school year. Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And the motion passed five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. seventeen-dash-nine-three without educational services through the twenty-seventeen-twenty-eighteen school year. Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five-zero. There be, be no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five-zero. The meeting is adjourned at seven forty-seven P.M.